I'd like to bring the meeting to order for Bradley Rural Water District number three. Special meeting, September third, two thousand twenty-four, seven P M at the Bradley Community Building in Bradley. Row call.
She lives.
Absent. Donna?
Here. Frankie here.
We'd like to read and approve the minutes from the last meeting.
Our last meeting was August twenty-first, twenty twenty-four, seven P M. It was our special meeting. We, um, we were talking about the work Jamie said it was talking about. It was against law for him to dig a hole without anybody there. Edwin agreed to be a helper when Jamie needed help, and he was supposed to sign all the papers. And then we were gonna check on the work with his comp. Oh, and the rental with Charles, the rental agreement with Charles Stevens.
I have talked to Charles and he said that he would get with us. He has, you know, he would kind of schedule what we can then.
We are, we will pay the money for Edwin for the paperwork to be filed, right?
The rental.
We were gonna pay the fifty-one dollars for the paperwork.
Yeah, whatever it gets a fine.
And we let it be known that Dutton Beach store, we have an account there for ports. And we ordered the lids from Home Depot. We received them, right? Okay. And payroll, we allowed payroll to be melted after the fifteenth. We decided Frankie would try to throw the phone. We're waiting for the, we were waiting for the grant to come in about the pickup for the Rural Water District three. And then all the gas checks and receipts need to show what it was for and who to. And then we adjourned at seven fifty-seven.
So next thing is discuss and take action.
I'm not reading those minutes.
Oh, I read those minutes.
I second it.
Thank you. I'm sorry about that. Discuss and take action on gravel for the roads for the wells, and that is a grant that it was more money from that fifty thousand that we got for the we didn't spend it all, so we are gonna get gravel for the road down there to the well. So, um, I make a motion that we accept the grant money to get the gravel for the road.
I second it.
And then the next thing is, is we had a little bit more money left, and we need a, a well door because the other one is, is no good in letting water in underneath the door. So, uh, so the grant is gonna also pay for that. So I, I make a motion that we use the money, the money for the grant for the well door.
Okay, I second.
All right, so you may have to help me with this next one, so. Um, we did receive a grant for the, a new pickup for the water company. So.
Uh, we filled out a rig grant a couple of months ago, eight, ten weeks ago. We finally have heard back that we did get accepted. This is a reimbursement grant. So we will have to come up with all of the money, and then we will turn in our receipts and our invoices, and then they will, um, reimburse us.
Eighty percent.
Eighty percent. So whenever we wrote the grant, we wrote it for twenty-eight thou- twenty-eight thousand, twenty-nine dollars. That's we looked for a vehicle. We found one for that amount. We sent in that quote to them. Then they took that and they gave us eighty percent of that, um, of that amount. Since then, vehicles have gone up, so we're gonna have to be very selective in doing the best that we can for the money that we have. But we will still have to put in our ten, or our twenty percent, which is gonna be at least five thousand, six hundred and six dollars. I didn't bring my glasses, so. So we will be in debt. We do have some money, but I don't know that we would want to. So we'll have to put in that amount of money.
So we need to sign something?
Yes, so here's the, um, the reason why we're having this special meeting along with that other grant is that we have to have this signed and attested by the board at a board meeting.
Well, I make a motion that we accept the grant.
I second it.
Okay, and so it will sign, and I drop the seal for us to get that.
She needs something too?
Well, we have to do this right down here. So we'll do that.
So we're moving on?
Yeah, so we, so we said to have those minutes for whenever we go to get the vehicle, we'll have to have those minutes as well.
All right, so we need to discuss and take action on hiring a new operator in lieu of Jamie resigning. Is the ninth your last day, Jamie?
I don't know. Y'all live the meetings. Who did I resign to?
We'll still have our regulars.
Well, D Q called us. She called us. So.
All right, we'll still have our regulars.
Huh? I'm living elsewhere with it. I'm part of our group, y'all.
Um, but we didn't know you were resigning early till we got the phone call.
I called her a long time ago. I went to her when I was new. That was part of our community, right?
So we need to take action on hiring a new operator. So, I mean, I think we need to run it in the newspaper and also any townspeople that's interested uh, need to get with somebody and let us know. Do you think of that?
I second it.
We have a high-speed water operator. For our system. Anybody else have something? I'm gonna adjourn the meeting.
Uh, oh, bring something up. All approached me. Ricky was wanting to have that hole filled up for the new list. Yes, he asked for that.
Ricky wants his meter, the dirt filled back in around it, where, wherever that was fixed or whatever.
Ricky has something to say.
Did, Jamie, did you, was it not filled in?
I've got a binder. And we're too much to go that hole and get a thing built to it.
Go ahead, B.
You know, just 'cause you talked to D Q and you give them heads up if you may be considering, uh, resigning because of things, the way, the things that are, for one, you know, uh, he is maintenance operator and, uh, he has no access to anything he needs right when he needs it. You know, he don't have time to play footies with everybody and you approve it, this and approve it, that and approve it. And, you know, if he says, y'all say, okay, y'all gonna do the backhoe thing, you make agreements with him. But when he made agreements with Charles for two hundred a day, used it twice, still needs to be used, but that's an issue. That man has busted his ass day and night for two years to get this system. Y'all don't even understand the countless hours he has spent off on his phone, research, finding all the cheapest things he can. And another thing is, he shouldn't have to be treated like a child to get what he needs to help our town. And another thing is, he's used his pickup for two years. He pays all the insurance. He fixes, he re, he buys the new tires for it. He does all the upkeep on it. He burns maybe two tanks or two dials of gas a month. That's less than three hundred dollars, hundred and fifty a whack. So you know, three hundred a month, when he's going back and forth to your wells, checking the town, that's an issue. He's used it too much.
Why is it an issue?
I don't know why it was done that when you called the special meeting.
There wasn't an issue.
What did you say?
We said, we need the receipts for the
Yeah.
And that's what we said. And that's what we said. We said.
Now, it's been over and over. Every time I talk to you about getting him a card, y'all act like he's gonna take the card and go buy Bradley something. That card down there that I talked to y'all before I got off the board, it can only be purchased there. And if he purchased it two times a month, it's no different than you giving him a check and him bringing you the receipt, then that woman's sending you an invoice for the month. You paying the invoice and you have everything you need, and he don't got to be hassled about it. But that was an issue. Let's throw that over there. We're not gonna talk about that. You know, I'm not trying to be shitty, but there's things that needs to be changed, no matter who is your water man, who is on this board that is easy access. Y'all don't want, okay, when you get ready to go pay your bills for a month, do you wanna have to, uh, go through five people to be able to do it? Or do you want to just sit down there and do it, just like him when he's setting his refrigerator at night? Like, I gotta go fix this and this. I need this, this, and this. Just get into the truck and go get it the next day, not go through four or five people and get their permission when you can talk to this one or that, one or that one, to get one you need.
Set up the accountant at the lumberyard and at Dutton's.
Donna has the time, what he needs. He can't get Dutton or the lumberyard. She knows that. She's run parts.
That's a hose that I've been getting to blow up.
Oh, what?
There are four hoses issued, chemical hoses, and that's the only place I can get it.
Some things are in special places he has to go get.
Travel, he's seen.
And he don't know many clever break hoses that does that.
Is it a better hose?
Yes, it is.
Hopefully it will stay tight and won't keep our chemical level.
Got to be a chemical hose.
Well, I will just say this. We, you're right. Some things need to be changed, and that's why we're trying to change them. In order to be able to change them, we have to do this kind of thing. So, because there's a lot of money.
I've said since I've been on the board, we can't keep living in nineteen-sixties eight.
Well, we are trying.
I understand that, but there's some things that are more important than others. You know, you paying the bills, him getting what he needs to fix what we need, having the equipment. He is sixty-two-year-old man.
We are trying to figure it out.
I understand that, but just like Ricky wants his hose over there.
Yeah.
It ain't no shovel deal. So, you know, he's like, okay, I need the backhoe, but are we gonna, you know, are they gonna throw fit 'cause I can get the backhoe?
It was never a fit throwing, but I agree. We do need a backhoe. There, we needed this vehicle. There's all these things that we need, Vicky. We can't just have them all at one time. And, um, you know, Lester helped us. I talked to Charles and I said, we want, we, it's not just about a two hundred time, two dollar, two hundred dollars a time for Jamie to use your, the equipment. It is about him being able to use it more than two hundred, you know, two hundred dollars a whack.
Well, he did. That's just like today. He got it.
We want him to be able to use that when he needs it.
Instead of just going and doing the one thing, he did three things. He fixed.
We want him to be able to have the equipment to be able to do it, but we don't have the money to pay two hundred dollars a time. So we talk, I talked to Charles.
I'm gonna let me ask you this.
To be able to, for him to have more access to the tractor, not just for big leaks, you know, he gets that for big leaks. Here's the deal. Jamie is a hard worker. You're a hundred percent right. He's worked his butt off, and we all see that. We all see that he has done a great job. This is a tireless job that goes on and on and on, and when you think you got it fixed, you don't have it fixed. And he has done a great job, and it is not an issue. We know that he's used his own vehicle. We have paid that money because we know he's using his own vehicle. We want to be good to Jamie. Whenever he asks for something, I try to get that for him. But we can't just all of a sudden get it. This big digger thing, we do need a big digger, but we cannot do it at two hundred dollars a whack, ten times a month.
It's going about, in time, we're gonna get it. Yes, we work like that. We've always worked like that. But there's certain things that are more important, and when you ask for something and you tell them, okay, this is illegal, this is not right, this is not up to par, then, you know, it shouldn't be, uh, well, we'll just use this one because, uh, we don't got the money. Well, you, you can't be broke all the time when some things, now, we've talked about this before. And like Donna said, when she got on the first, got on the board, you know, when we was paying twelve hundred dollars a whack for a backhoe to come over here?
For one dig.
For one dig? Okay, we did three digs the other day for two hundred. Okay, that's a lot of money saved. Okay, it's like today, when he had no helper or no one to watch him, you know, he's been in trouble twice doing that. He got hung in the mud and then dug out twice. Uh, he pulled his leg in back. He's had chemical burns from it. And another thing is, no man should go down in a hole by itself with nobody around and see if he gets out or not. No man should go in that chemical house with no ventilation. He's almost not walked out there twice. That chemical hits you in the face. Hot days, it holds chemicals in there. I'm just saying, there's things that can happen. I'm not saying he needs somebody to walk around and hold his hand, but there's certain things, like the big deep holes and digs, there's somebody should be there.
We all agree about that. We all agree. We all agree.
I understand that.
We all, we a hundred percent.
But, you know, it's, it's not, it, it took too long to get the help apart, but you know, it, nobody should be put in that position. And them big deep holes and stuff like that, it's very dangerous. But, you know, we had, he had, the day he did that big deep hole, he didn't have a helper. He had a backhoe operator. Do you think Victor's backhoe operator is gonna get off and get ass deep in mud and dig and ball down in that crap? He's there to run the backhoe. So no, he didn't have no help that day.
The thing is, is it is getting better. Like, within six months, we have done a lot of things, you know.
Things happened.
We got the fifty thousand, that, we, we got that. We've got the pickup. He, he wanted a pickup. We got the pickup.
No, I'm not saying that y'all have made improvements. I'm just saying.
We can only do it so quickly.
Yes, but you still miss some point. There's some certain improvements.
No, I'm not missing the point. He needed a help.
That are more important.
I understand that.
Than others, that should be reached first.
We have addressed that now. We have addressed that. Edwin has said that he will help. He is going to get the.
My son is not gonna sign no waiver, 'cause I'm not gonna allow it.
Okay.
That is illegal. That's crap. I mean, you don't sign waivers to go digging. He's not a contract, like, I mean, if he, if y'all wanna pay fifty dollars an hour.
It don't matter if he's contracted or not. Read the law. Y'all still have to cover him.
And we, and we have work with his comp.
It's in writing.
So what is that, what's that waiver doing? He falls down, gets hurt in that, uh, hole, we sign, uh, I'm gonna take him to the doctor on work with comp. Same way, Donna's reading the meters, she balls breaks her ankle, what happens? Same thing. I don't understand it. You, if you had to read, when you read the water meters, if you got snake bit, you got bug bit, whatever, we have work with comp for that. So what's the purpose of this waiver?
Well, lots of people use it.
For what? It, what paper it's written on?
For people that are not employees of companies, but they come onto the property to do a job.
When you hire him as a helper to help him, he is an employee of the deal.
Maybe look up the new rules after COVID. It's all changed.
I mean, I've asked, I've read a lot about it.
Independent contractor, if he works for one company, they have to file liability insurance for him. I can show you on paper. It is really changed.
You asked the lawyer, didn't you?
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I called the lawyer to find out about what needs to be done or whatever. He said that they, that the person who was coming on, he would be liable for himself, that he would help somebody. Um, he would know what he was supposed to do. He would use his own tools. And, um, as long as we weren't supplying him with, I don't have my paper in front of me, so. Um, that we would not supply him with a uniform or any, that he would be coming to help. And it'd be under his own deal that, hey, I'm not getting hurt, I, you know, I'm here to help. I'm of my own recognizance that I will not sue the water company.
I'm not even knowing about that, but you need to read the law. I'm not on my phone if you like reading.
Well, I don't have my glasses right now, but if you print that off, then we will know. We don't know what to do, Jamie.
I'm serious. No, I'm serious. The law changed over COVID.
Okay.
Well, Edwin's been helping him for since.
I didn't know that.
Two years.
Till I was told.
Well, I don't know. Where do you get the?
But he was.
I mean, it's, it's part of the state. Where do you get it from?
The, uh, uh, the Unemployment Commission.
Unemployment Commission is who has the paper. It says that this is what you do. I, I don't know. That this is what you do for people that are not employees.
Workers Compensation Commission.
Workers Compensation.
Work comp, comp source.
Yes.
You work like that, don't you, Deanie? How does that work?
I have to sign a waiver if I walk on somebody's place. Makes them not liable for nothing.
But you're doing a single job. You're not actually go, okay, well, say you go to work for a certain housing addition. You're gonna work there for a while.
Yeah.
Is it different?
Well.
You can use it for two years, anywhere you work.
Yeah, see, our deal is, like, if I walk on the job site for somebody, I have to sign a waiver saying that they're not liable for me, because I'm a subcontractor. I'm a contractor.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, I mean.
But Edwin's not a subcontractor.
Right, that's what, I don't know how y'all.
So that's what I'm saying. I'm not trying to start any crap about it. I have mixed feelings about it.
Right, yeah.
Because he's not a subcontractor.
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm walking on my own tools and everything.
He's gonna actually be working for the water company as an employee, even if it's part-time, if it's five hours a month.
Yeah, if you hire out of somebody like that, and you have to have a comp, um, employee walks on the job site, for me, I have to have comp for them. I have to cover them, you know. But me, I don't, 'cause I'm owner, but I, I don't know what kind of deal I'm.
He gets hurt, he'll duck, take it, go home. He ain't gonna sue you anyway. It's just the principle. I don't understand what the waiver's good for.
Yeah.
You can have five family members work with no workman's comp.
Yeah.
Six, when you gotta have. I've read all the laws. But COVID did change all the laws, and you know why that changed? 'Cause everybody didn't have helpers, so they called in and called them contractors.
Yeah.
They changed the law now workman's.
'Cause I bring all my tools and stuff pretty much, you know.
It don't matter.
You know, I mean.
And if any contractor falls under workman's comp now.
'Cause I got the invoices down there. We got, what, a hundred of them right now in the safe? 'Cause when we get on big houses, you know, work for me, you gotta sign it, 'cause I can't afford a comp no more. Comp eats me up.
And you know, when I was working as an independent contractor, we'd go paint houses and stuff like that. If the people on the premises ask you to, yes, you did it.
Yeah.
You know, you, you waived it because they didn't want you to steal if you fell off the ladder. You're doing that on your own.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, and I understand that, but we're a company.
Yeah.
So when you let, you, when you ha, just like Alex, they have a helper.
Yeah.
He is paid and took care of, same as Mark is. So I don't understand what the difference is here.
Yeah. Like I say, like, if you hire out for a company or something, yes, they have to supply a comp for you, just like me. I mean.
And it don't matter who they hired to do it.
Yeah.
It's like I told them a while back ago, you know, Edwin's invested a lot of hours he hasn't got paid for, and he's not mad about it. He will do anything to help with water and to keep his daddy safe.
Yeah.
But the deal of it is, it don't matter if she hires Foltre, Freddie down the road, uh, it, it don't matter who. We need to figure out how this really needs to be done, because I don't understand the waiver part.
That's exactly what we're trying to figure out, because we've always ran the water company.
Yeah, you're trying to figure it out. I understand that, but you also.
We've always ran the water company exactly like you said. Um, there has been helpers, and they have not gotten paid, and that's the way we've always done it. That's not, I'm not saying.
Now, we've, we've got paid for helpers before. They just get ten dollars an hour.
That is not, that is not, not, that is not what we're saying. We have not had a second employee. You're saying add a second employee. So we've never done that. We have figured.
No, I, I don't think there's any other choice how you can legally do it.
I don't know either.
I mean.
We're trying to figure it out.
You can do it independently, but you can't, you can't set the rates. You see what I'm saying? You might get somebody come over here to help him for four hours and charge you a hundred dollars an hour. That's what I'm trying to say.
Yeah, 'cause they're an independent contractor. They charge whoever they want, damn near.
That's what I'm saying. You have no control over that.
No, you can't set the waivers.
But when you say, okay, you're gonna work part-time.
No, it's independent contractor.
Whenever you're needed for this company.
Backhoe operator right now.
At ten dollars an hour, whatever it is. You know what I'm saying?
Okay, Mr. Henry, do you know anything about this?
Um, yes, ma'am. Uh, there's, I'll just, I'll read a few resources here just briefly. So some of your determinations with determining if someone's an independent contractor or not would include, and I'm happy to forward these resources to anyone interested. This is, this is publicly available. So there's some of the criteria here, some of the bullet point. If you are the person's only employer, there are most likely not an independent contractor. If you analyze anything other than the end result of their work, such as how it's completed or when it is completed, they are most likely not an independent contractor. And would be eligible for workman's comp. But we could go through and build something specifically to meet the needs here. Uh, that, I mean, I understand, I mean, everything being expressed in the room, I think, is valid, uh, and indeed.
Well, making it independent is, Jamie don't know how long it takes to fix the line.
Certainly.
Like, is there ten hours or one hour? That makes it an independent contractor, 'cause you can't set time limit on it.
Right.
And to say that he's not an independent contractor, you have to put a timeline on it. You can't put a timeline on it. Sure, what's gonna happen in the hole?
Right.
I know what you're saying, but, yeah.
I would say, I mean, in this case, we need a lawyer, a labor law to tell us how to create this position, the sought-for, we need an official legal opinion. I'm happy to share these documents on this. Uh, you know, I don't believe in this case, the young man would be ineligible for workman's comp. I believe he would be eligible for workman's comp. That said, if, I mean, we could try to work out something that would be satisfactory to all parties, uh, you know.
How does that work? Then if he, if you pay his insurance, then that makes him an employee, then that means that he gets a hourly, or that means he gets a wage.
Correct, yes.
But it don't have to be monthly, like.
If we could see what.
If it's part-time, he would still get.
My comp used to be like, if I had to bring on another employee, I could, and they just had to do my bill. For hiring much money, I pay them, 'cause mine's based on percentage of how much I pay them. You know, and it varies on whatever you do, 'cause like mine, minus all this stuff, mine's higher. Mine's like twenty percent. Every dollar I pay them, I pay comp, twenty more percent, plus some premium on top of all that. Y'all's might be different, you know, I mean, 'cause you can add more deals on there to cover more employees in case you need them.
Well, I mean, if you're gonna, you, if you're adding a person, you're gonna have money.
Right.
Which, I called my lady, and she was out of the office, and so you just, you don't get to have immediate results.
Oh, no, 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 you don't know. It's, that makes you so mad after you're walking up, or they got police officers sitting there with pistols on their side, 'cause I'm gonna get some mad, you know.
You don't get to, I, I called the lawyer. I called the insurance place to try to find out what we have to do. We, Edwin said that he would sign the paper. We're trying to figure out what needs to be done, and I feel like we're moving in the right direction, but that is not a, there was never an attack on Edwin or Jamie or anyone else. It is growing.
I guess it was. I'm just saying, I don't think.
It is growing pains of how the water company is that. Well, we already know that, that it's not.
Before you want them to sign it.
We could certainly hammer out something, I think, you know, we can go through, work with your lawyer, work with your legal team, and find a, you know, a, a good solution to this, I think, that would satisfy them. It would take some, you know, uh, we just, we'd have to sit down and business with them and figure out what would be good. Because I understand the desire to protect the young man's liability in case of injury, and I also understand the budgetary concerns of the board.
Not even my child, any child.
Certainly, yes. It might be.
You know, somebody got hurt, they hurt really bad, you know, you want that on your conscience, just go away. You, you, you sign your waiver, which ain't gonna hold up. A lawyer's gonna kick your butt.
Well, that, and it's like you said, it's for anybody. I mean, it's for anybody.
Protection for anybody.
Surely we could find a, a place that would be. Surely we could find a, a place that would be protective to both parties and meet both goals. I think that could be done.
They're probably, y'all's like, I did mine and Ellen, like, if I hired another employee, just a comp source, had access to everything, I went there and said, hey, I hope, I paid this guy for a week, a thousand dollars, and they hit me with two hundred more dollars on my comp. That'd be, I mean, that's how it down, like, you know. But y'all's might be different, because y'all's a corporation, I don't know, you know?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I don't know. Wait till my lady call me back.
Yeah, they don't get no hurry about nothing.
Uh, for what it's worth, I mean, I've told Jamie, I mean, anytime I'm available, I, I would like to come over and help if he's dealing with a dangerous dig. Uh, but, I mean, just due to the nature of my job, if I'm across the state and dealing with another emergency, I'm not always available.
There's only three of these guys.
There's the driver. The, you support agriculture only supplies three positions. I wish they did more, but, uh, I mean, for what it's worth, I, you know.
Well, we appreciate that. We appreciate it.
I've never missed a third.
Okay, so, we're trying to figure that out, Deanie. We don't know how to figure it out.
Yeah, I definitely didn't get a opinion. He, you know, it's just like, yeah, he did call, and he talks to Kimberly. You know, things are going bad, and he feels upset about things and stuff, but he did not put resignation in to nobody.
That is not what she said. Hundred percent.
You can't go by what. I can say you put your job at the beauty shop, that'll make you angry.
Well, I mean.
You have to have a written resignation.
I'm just second.
I don't work here no more.
But, I mean, that's where she called.
But, I mean.
But I'm not gonna quit pushing what I know is right.
I mean, when you go, I mean, he didn't tell Frankie, tell you, and he didn't tell Donna that he resigned. So this meeting on him resigning, and then he, you know, and another thing.
So are you saying he didn't resign?
Now, did he tell you he resigned?
He did not.
Frankie, did he tell you he resigned?
No.
Donna, did he tell you he resigned?
No, but the operator, the head above him, called us and said, you will have to have our operator come tonight? Because Jamie is.
Because he, if things didn't get better, and things didn't change.
Say that.
It doesn't matter what she's told y'all. I'm telling you how it works. You can't go by somebody else saying something. Did any one of you call him and ask him point blank?
No, his boss called us.
No, I didn't ask that. Did any one of you?
No, no, they didn't. We are trying to figure out.
Call and ask him, hey, man, what's the wrong, what's wrong?
If he.
Why do you wanna resign? Any of that?
I was dating, did you cue my boss?
I mean, how, how does DQ get called?
Why did you call and resign to them?
He didn't.
I told her, anytime I'm thinking about resigning, I promise her well, I'll call. I go practice, I was thinking about it.
So, did you resign or did you not resign?
I resigned today.
So you are resigning?
Don't even start running well today.
But you know what? He didn't resign. But, you know, y'all just keep pushing that resign, resign, stuff like you want him to.
I never, we never wanted him to.
Well.
We never wanted him to. We have, we have worked with him with everything that we have, if he has asked it, we have tried to do it.
Now, I don't understand why, I don't care what DQ or ORW, I don't care what he might told y'all. Just because he told her, if I do, you know, I'm thinking, things were getting really tough around here, and I can't get what, I can't do my job because I can't get parts, or I can't do this, then you might need to look for somebody else. But not one of y'all called and asked him point blank, are you resigning? You, y'all just took upon yourself to run with this meeting that he resigned and he needed a new person. And nobody sent him notice to this meeting.
We have to have rules. Because all of us neighbors don't have to dislike each other over something like this.
No.
That's why things have to be set up the way that they're gonna be. This is too small of a town for people to get sideways.
I don't know anybody that's sideways.
We're not.
I'm just saying, it, it need to be handled differently.
You know, I don't want you mad, I don't want him mad, I don't, you know, I, I.
I don't know, man, ain't nobody. I am just saying, it didn't get handled right.
Well.
And now y'all make you feel like, that y'all don't want him here, that y'all want him out, so he's gonna resign.
Well, we had one member tell us that he said that he better, that she better call us because, and get somebody to fix that, because he doesn't work there no more.
He can't call and tell them that he quit, and it be legal. He has to tell y'all.
DQ makes the rules, so we, you know, with that.
They don't, they don't, they, they have to.
She was concerned about having an operator.
She could've called and gave you heads up, she could've talked to you about it, same way he talks to Travis, or he talks to him. But he has to have it out of his mouth to y'all, or in writing, where y'all are, to resign him. Is that not true?
Well, it's in lieu of him resigning, so we were waiting to see. We, we can't just.
That's what I'm saying, but, you know, not just.
And that's why he told me a while ago that, well, we had the meeting early, no, we're, we're probably having a meeting on the ninth also, but.
But, no, like, she's standing the deal last month, when the meeting was, but she getting this one? He didn't know nothing about this meeting.
Well, it, it's posted.
If I wouldn't read this.
Their meeting wasn't posted.
Office, I wouldn't know if y'all's last, uh, special meeting wasn't posted.
Yes, it was posted.
Where's that?
Posted on that door.
Right, what, on the.
And on the post office. I get all the mine from the post office, and I just scan them and post them and do places and.
Yes, every meeting.
If it wasn't there, I wouldn't know about it.
And I have to, I had to start signing it and dating it and putting the time on that I put it up.
I just heard, see.
Yeah, because I always put one up here in case somebody comes up here and looks, and I always put the post office, because everybody goes to the post office. So yes, I do post them. That's one of the, given my job.
Jamie, if, if you are not, if you did not say that you're resigning, she called and said that you a hundred percent, Jamie is leaving the job, he will not be here.
To be honest, I can't do the job no more. I'm going to be tested, chemical poisoning, because my muscles won't heal up after that dig, and they be getting all the chemicals shot on me. I don't know what's gonna happen with me. I can show you all of it. It's all what Claude's got.
It's all what?
What Claude's going through is what that chemical that we're using causes. I can show you in writing. Even down to heart attacks. It lowers your pH in your system, your muscles won't heal, you have breathing problems. And it causes a lot of things. And this is low volume of breathing the chemical, because that room ain't ventilated. That's the next thing y'all better get into, is get that room legal. DEQ is overlooking it way bad by the state laws.
That what?
Overlooking it way bad about the state laws.
Well, I thought that the window in there was ventilation.
No, if nobody's in that building, it has to be six percent of our exchange air. If I'm inside, it's gotta be sixty percent of our exchange air. An open door don't do that. Now, that's legal for a chemical room.
Well, I don't know anything about.
Hopefully some of the grant might not can be used to.
I'm just telling you. For future reference.
For anybody.
And there needs to be a eye wash in there.
How come when they done their inspections, nobody said anything about that?
I don't know.
That's what we said.
I don't know. I'll tell you something else they had said, and y'all's gonna find out. Paperwork, they've been skipping. I didn't find that out till today.
What paperwork?
The monthly end reading that I've been asking for.
The what?
The end reading on the meters has to be turned into DQ every thirty days. Has to be turned into the county every thirty days.
What end reading?
Can you explain it better to me, Travis, what you was telling me today on the violation of that I didn't know?
Um, so, this, this is a question for DQ. Um, but, uh, Bradley's the first system I've ever encountered that doesn't turn in a monthly operating report every month. Um, y'all may fall into some unusual exemption, but, uh, I can tell you, you're the first system I've run into that, that doesn't submit one. Uh, so, I, that's, you understand what I'm saying and what I'm not saying, right? It, it's just, it's unusual. Um, and it may have just fallen by the wayside. Um, as for the ventilation, uh, that falls under P I H, uh, rules rather than DQ rules. There are two regulatory bodies for, um, water operation in Oklahoma. One of them is municipal OSHA, which is, uh, P I H. The other is DQ. Uh, the particular regulation that Jamie's referring to is a, a P I H regulation. Uh, that requires a fan and a alarm system, uh, a window in the chemical room, uh, which you're in compliance as the window. But there is a certain air exchange required, um, in any case, that, that's the background for that.
Okay, is that for bigger cities?
And it only took this many years to find that out.
Yeah, we didn't, I didn't know about that previously.
And nobody's talking about it, what Jamie's been asking y'all for.
Uh, these codes are updated often, uh, you know, they, they roll out new regulations every year.
God. At the, when you read, when it's, they read the meters, and you figure out how many gallons these persons used. Say there's forty-eight meters. You have to tell him how many gallons did them forty-eight meters use? Because he has to go down there every day and tell them how many gallons he pumped a day.
And what the forty meters.
So he can't finish his paperwork, so.
Well, I didn't know anything, I mean, he has said, does, has somebody used this amount or, or whatever, but he has not asked me for that number, ever.
Now, I have, he even asked on.
Do you have not?
Okay, well.
Have, have, he has, he asked you that?
Uh, recently, I, recently, he had said that he would like to know.
Because he, it's on his paperwork. He has to have that number.
In case there's a leak or something like that.
And he has to put it on his paper.
This is the first time ever that I was even told that I had to have a grand total.
It's been done for years. I don't know why they're overlooking it, but it is a bad.
A monthly thing. I, I don't. I, I, I don't know. There's a paper at the end of the year that, um, you know, I go through and see.
Well, when Mark came over and helped us, he gave Jamie, Jamie sheets. And you have, he has to go down there every day and tell them what the reading is and how many gallons he used. Okay, at the end of the month, when y'all do the reading and distribute how many gallons was used to all the meters, he also needs that number, is all I'm saying. Because that's on that worksheet.
But it's also a write-off on how many gallons we want to count, like the fire department uses. It is a write-off, because it's a loss.
Which can they help us in the long run?
I can.
I don't know what the loss means, but it is a ratable loss.
Well, I'm happy to give that to you at the end of the month.
I didn't know all this, I'm.
Well, I didn't know it either. This is the first I've heard of it, so.
Jamie, that's like Jamie, I.
Another thing changes for the water company.
I'm learning, you bitch.
But there's something else.
What?
That we're in violation of, scooting.
Huh?
Scooping for y'all.
How are we involved?
Because y'all went to the school up there, but that ain't the school y'all need to go to. There's a board operator school.
Which when Alan was off short-term and stuff, we had, uh, what was the name? John come down there, and he was talking to his class at school, which I think would be great for anybody.
Well, we did, we did go.
No, that, that's not the same. It's actually teaching you about how to be on the board and how to run the board and how to do bookkeeping and things of that nature. I mean, it's a, it's really a cool class. And he offered to come down and do it for us, but then he never, he never did, which I think would've been great. Because when she left, you know, we was kinda in the dark.
We went to classes at that convention.
Maybe that's not the same, honey. I mean, I.
Uh, we went, like, there was board member, no, there was board member classes, and then there's operator classes.
And we went to all those.
Yes, we did.
They taught you.
I would say.
We went to our eight hours.
It didn't used to be that way, but we, when I went, you know, we mainly listened to more about what he does.
Well, it was, it was board member classes, and it was operator classes.
Because, uh.
There's both, and, and in the deal, it shows, you know, this is for board members, this is for operators, this is for, and it even goes, breaks it down into detail to say if you.
Off, new, new board members, or if you're getting your.
Hours, or.
For the, for the other.
Or if it is about, uh, water waste, or if it's about water disinfection, or, you know, it breaks it down so you can pick which classroom you go to.
I didn't, don't remember I was sitting, but, um, I just know that.
But more, I mean, more schooling is never wrong.
There's so many things that they've changed.
A bunch of stuff had changed.
And, you know, we don't know about, and I know y'all try, and y'all work good at it, I mean, whatever, but we try every day to make things better. But there's things that, you know, we just gotta keep going with the times, and they're throwing on us.
And honestly, DQ is who our people are to say, you gotta do this, you gotta do this, you gotta do this. And so that's who we try to follow of what has to be done.
But they're, they're not the only person, I mean, and you got, there's other things that involved in it too, that, that we could do to better ourselves, our, our town. Like, the more we learn about how to bookkeep, how to save money, the more we learn about handling, uh, the board, rules, regulations, new laws, you know, things that, that hasn't been updated in thirty years. That, you know, we've been working on, a little like Thomas said, throw it on us. But I would rather like, kinda learn more about it in advance than it just throwed on me when it's wrong. I get tired of them telling me, it's wrong, it's wrong, it's wrong. I know y'all do too. But for twenty-five years, we knew it was wrong. Nobody said nothing.
We are just doing the best that we can, and it can change from just trying to move forward every, every inch that we can move forward. We're trying to move forward, trying to keep everybody in water.
Take your shoes, pray we don't trip.
Yep, that's, that's the true fact of the matter. We are trying to have enough money to be able to pay and get what we need to do to provide safe water to everybody in Bradley. And, you know, Jamie being the operator, he lives, he cares about Bradley, he lives in Bradley, he has been a good operator. Now, I don't understand why he resigned, or if he didn't resign, or why he called DQ and said he was upset or mad or whatever, because we're a team, and we've all tried to work together. Uh, we're doing the very best that we can.
That's not the first time I told Travis to retire. I think the first time I stayed on because y'all did, there was an operator at my place.
There's still, there's still not an operator to take the place.
I got a question there. If he's gone, he ain't gonna be doing it anymore. Get a leak, who's gonna take care of it?
Do what?
That's why, that's why I have to leave, we're hiring somebody.
Yeah, we gotta find somebody.
But what happens if there's a leak? Will you hire somebody?
I don't know.
Or without water?
I guess we'll call a plumber.
Actually, uh, other, actually, other rural water districts can come over and help, and they will.
Well, they didn't help us, but we paid two hundred and fifty dollars a month for a man to help us, and he never came over here once. And what I am concerned about as a citizen is when you get a new person, are they gonna know how to run these new wells? And are they gonna keep the chemicals straight? And all that, that, you know, he's worked two years to just line out, but, you know, that's the people's choice and.
Anybody else have anything? Me and you, Derek. Second half? First, second half?
Second.